I'm going to call the regular DeKalb City Council meeting of October 28th to order. Roll call, please.
Ms. Zaza.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Verbeck.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes. Here. Eight present.
So moving on to agenda item B, Pledge of Allegiance, Cub Scout Pack 104, you want to come on in? Thanks for coming out tonight. It's really awesome you're here to help us with this, okay? All right, Cub Scouts, are you ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, nice job, everybody. All right, guys. We're getting up here and wanting to take a picture. We don't have to sit in the front row.
If you guys can back up a little bit, we don't like to trust.
Come on in here. All right, yes, yes. All right, we'll be looking at the camera that way. Oh, we got a straggler. Okay, all right. All right, right over here, guys. Three, two, one. Awesome, nice. Say aye. Thank you very much, all.
Hi, guys.
All right, moving on to agenda item C, approval of the agenda. I take a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So move.
Second.
Move by Alderman Verbeck, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Zaza.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbeck.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight aye.
All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to agenda item D, presentations, we have none. And then agenda item E, public participation. First person, Mark Charba, please.
My comments are going to be very brief. I am happy to report finally that the nuisance sidewalk in front of 230 East Lincoln Highway has finally been fixed. This is the sidewalk that had tile that was installed by a downtown business owner that I don't believe was ever installed with any sort of official approvals from the city. No other downtown businesses are permitted to dig up their sidewalks and put in their own artwork on the sidewalk. So after two years of complaints and the fact it was falling apart, I see that we finally fixed it. However, it appears that one particular individual who owns the property at 230 East Lincoln Highway seems to think he can still place his own artwork on the sidewalk in front of his business. No other businesses are permitted to do that. That appears to show some sort of favoritism, so just a note, thank you.
Just a note. All right, then next I have Kayla Friedman. And Kayla, you have three minutes for your comments. There's a timer on the screen, too, that helps you just know where you're at.
I'll be quick.
Okay, no problem.
So hi, my name's Kayla Friedman, this is Keegan Larson. We are residents of DeKalb and we would like to thank you for the opportunity to let me speak today about my personal reasons and believing why we need help on our street with people going over the speed limit. Three weeks ago, unfortunately, personally, we lived through one of the worst days of our lives and a vehicle down our road hit and killed our dog. Unfortunately, some of our neighbors had to witness the whole accident. With the aftermath of it happening, it was obvious to all of us after we discussed that the driver of the vehicle was either distracted or going too fast to be able to respond to the fact that she was out in the road. We do stand here today with the hopes that the tragedy we went through, no other person has to go through. We have noted every single day and night since then that there are multiple cars speeding down the street as we see our neighborhood kids playing out in their yards and crossing streets to get to bus stops or home before and after school. I stand here today asking for your help in the safety of all of our neighbors and their family members and friends. We have come up with some ideas that we would think would help this issue of speeders down the roads. Our first idea was that we have more patrols up and down the neighborhood and we have personally called with our story and have seen an increase of it, but we would still like it to be more of a consistent thing. Other ideas we have come up with is speed trap signs posted on more speed limit signs or a stop sign or yield signs around the crossroads of Molif Street and Jasmine Street. This is a topic I'm going to feel passionate about for the rest of time and I would like to see more getting done to slow down these drivers for the safety of all in our neighborhood. I do just want to make sure that this doesn't happen to anybody else with even their human kids. That dog was personally our child and it really did hurt to see, so we just don't want anything like that to happen again to anybody else. So I do appreciate you guys letting me have the opportunity to speak today and give that concern and hopefully we can come up with something together.
Kayla, I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay.
Maybe we set up a time just to get together and talk about it.
Yeah.
I'll review what we've been doing, but then also definitely hear your ideas and see what we can do to your specific situation.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you for coming out.
What street is it?
Molif.
Molif, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And you two don't have to stay, you're more than welcome to if you want to, but don't feel obligated to stay the whole night.
Thank you.
You bet. All right, moving on to agenda item F, appointments, we have none. And then agenda item G, consent agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of October 14th, 2024. Number two, counts payable and payroll through October 28th, 2024 in the amount of $3,563,635.64. Number three, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, September 2024. Number four, FY 2024 Human Services Funding Third Quarter Report. And number five, Resolution 2024-104 authorizing the approval of certain executive session meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Move by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Powell. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbeck.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Zaza.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight aye.
All right, then moving on to agenda item H, we've got two public hearings. The first one, first I'm going to open up, what time, 6:08. So I'm going to open up the public hearing at 6:08. And this is a public hearing regarding the TIF redevelopment plan and project for the South Fourth Street TIF redevelopment project area. Can I have a motion to, well, no, there's no motion, I just called it to order. With that, is there anyone here that would like to speak during the public hearing regarding the TIF? Just checking. I know we've had a lot of conversations. Step up to the podium.
We recently had a neighborhood event that was hosted by the city regarding the TIF district that was attended by many interested residents. Many of these residents that did, well, actually I know for a fact there are a few residents who attended that did not, were not even made aware that their house was in the TIF district. In fact, there were, I know there were two letters sent out by the city, not once, but twice. Some residents that I spoke to that are clearly in the map of the TIF district still have not been officially notified by the city. This is why, first off, I don't think we're ready for prime time with this particular TIF district proposal. The big key that I took away from the neighborhood meeting that took place was the mayor specifically told everybody at this meeting that the city will walk away from this proposal if the residents were not in favor of it. And I attended that meeting and I certainly got the impression that many, many, if not a majority of the residents there, were not in favor of it. Another vast number of people were still not understanding what this is all about. I think we're moving through this way too quick and the process needs to be delayed further, so perhaps another community meeting could be held on a different date so people could be informed. That would be all the people that are in the TIF district and all members of the city. This not only affects people who are residing in the TIF district, it affects the entire city population. Now, TIF basically has become little more than a subsidy for the private sector that takes away money from schools and other important services. I contend that past TIF programs that this city has implemented in the past were woefully lacking in transparency. Now, folks at home, city council, everybody in the room, if you think your school taxes are high now, District 428 is going to take the biggest hit from the money that it will not see as a result of the South Fourth Street TIF district. That means the district most likely is going to increase taxes even further to make up for the lost revenue. This will also impact taxes paid to the city, to the library, the park district, who will have to increase taxes to make up for the money that will, the city will funnel into its preferred, to its preferred developers, most of which I notice are friends of certain people in this room. Residents seem to think, or at least we've been told, residents have been told that supposedly if you live in the TIF district, you're going to get money for projects around the house, maybe some sewer pipes or something that you need to be put in. All you have to do is look at the past with previous TIF districts. It was in 2010, the amount that was actually given to individuals who reside in the TIF district as opposed to businesses, homeowners, got .1% of the money that was distributed in 2010, .1%. We are including the false narrative trying to persuade residents that live in the TIF district that they're going to have money for their personal projects. That is clearly not the case. Another big issue with how this TIF district is mapped out is we've included three other taxing bodies within the TIF district. The park district is included, the school district, and we also have, I believe, the township. So they are all somehow gerrymandered into this TIF district, which means they're going to be eligible to come to the city council in the future and request money. These are taxing districts, they can get their own money for their projects, they don't need this money. We need this council, if it decides to go forward this, with this, to say, hey, if any of these taxing bodies, which by the way are not contributing any money to the TIF district, mind you, they're increment, they don't have an increment because they pay zero taxes, we need this council to go on record and promise that in the future, that if any of these taxing bodies come forward to this council, that they cannot ask for money or we will deny them money. They don't need the money, especially the school district. The school district is flush with money right now. So the fact that these particular taxing districts are gerrymandering in almost seems like a quid pro quo to me to get their support. Now, mind you, I'm well aware of this and maybe the public's not aware of this, these other taxing bodies have no vote in the measure. The city council with their vote solely can approve this TIF district. They do not need the approval of the other taxing bodies that are part of the tax rolls, if you will, or part of the, part of the process that discusses this. This council has the sole authority to make that decision. So unfortunately, I know that there are some members of this council that are already indicated they're in favor of this. Unfortunately, I don't think we're ready for prime time with this. I think this needs to be postponed. I think the residents need to be further informed on this. We are not ready to move forward with the idea of this South Fourth Street TIF district. Me personally, I'm against it. As Alderman Morris clearly stated previously at a meeting, TIF districts work half the time. It's a huge gamble. You don't know if you're, it's going to be successful or not. Believe me, I want something done with South Fourth Street, but I don't believe TIF is the way to go. It's only going to cause your taxes to go up. And a 50/50 gamble, boy oh boy, that's not good enough for me. If it was 80, 90%, maybe. That's all I have.
Would anyone else like to come up and speak? Well, it's a public hearing, we're collecting feedback from the public.
As a public member, may I encourage the audience to come up and speak? I see that many of you are out this evening that I've never seen out before and it seems like you may have strong feelings about this and we are absolutely eager to hear from you.
Hi, we live at the corner of Fourth and Fairview, my boyfriend and I, Jason and Katie, we just want to say that we're for the TIF project.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, the beautiful thing is, all of us, our emails and our phone numbers are published online. Just Google any one of us, City of DeKalb, Alderman, City of DeKalb mayor. Feel free to give a call, shoot an email, we're happy to answer further questions that might come up during the process. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:16. And... One second, for the record, I just want to reflect that it is the final adjournment of the public hearing. Go ahead. Thank you. All right, perfect. Then we'll move on to the second public hearing that we have tonight, which is... Sorry. There we go. So I'm going to go ahead and call our second public hearing to order at 6:17. This is a public hearing regarding a proposed annexation and development agreement for approximately 147 acres of property located at the northeast corner of Peace Road and Fairview Drive, Project Midwest. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak at this public hearing? Okay, and I forgot to ask, city manager, is there anything? I always ask you.
Just that we're going to talk about a couple ordinances toward the end of the meeting and you'll have a chance to talk about...
Yeah, on that one, a lot more to come later on in the meeting.
Yeah.
All right, I'll give a last call on this public hearing. All right, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing at 6:17. Just so you all know, you don't feel obligated to stay here the whole entire night. If you were here to listen to the public hearing, by all means, you can go home. I know you're all very busy people and you've got things to do tonight. If you want to stay and listen and see what else we're going to be talking about tonight, by all means, please stick around, we're always happy to have you. All right, moving on to agenda item I, considerations. One, consideration of the annual property tax levy in the city of DeKalb. Can I have a motion to bring this consideration to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderwoman Zaza. City manager.
Thank you. And hopefully some people are here to hear the conversation about property taxes. That's something that I think all of us are interested in and concerned about. So there's a fair amount of detail here and I hope people who are here tonight have had a chance to go to the website and look at it or have otherwise picked up copies of what's, what is available in terms of background. The city, like all other local taxing bodies at this time of the year, has the assessed valuation of the property that is within, that provides the framework for that particular taxing body. And I'll just say as an aside, so the city and the library have about the same EAV, the school district has the largest, because in terms of land area, they expand beyond DeKalb Township, Afton Township, and so forth. So anyway, they're, they're, like you, wrestling with how much property taxes they want to raise from the general public, which are businesses and residents who pay property tax. And so how do they arrive at that? Well, other boards such as, as yours are, are looking at proposals, variety of options, I hope, that, that speak to what they have needed in the past, what they might need in the, in the present, and what they might need in the future. Some of these local taxing bodies have a limit of, under PTEL, which is, I don't want to go too far in the weeds, but statewide restriction unless you're a home role community, and, which is 5% or the, the inflation rate as defined by the DeKalb County Supervisor of Assessments and County Clerk, which this year is significantly less than 5% in terms of local cost of living. So I believe it's 3.4%. So those are some parameters. So what are these taxing bodies actually voting on? Aside from the actual money, they also want to know what kind of impact, I hope, what kind of impact this is going to have on the pocketbooks of the people like yourselves, many of the people in this room who are going to be paying property taxes starting next April, they'll, they'll go out to their mailbox and they'll see something that represents the extended result of what you and, and the other local taxing bodies are looking at this fall. There's a certain amount of guesswork involved in this. There are property tax appeals that occur every year and the actual amount of wealth and worth in the valuation of the property that we draw from is not finally known until February, March of the following year. So here's where we are right now. Last year, the, the sum of all of the, the taxing bodies' rates together was about 9.41, $9.41 per hundred. That's what all the local taxing bodies were drawing from the pocketbooks of businesses and taxpayers. Our, and for those people in the audience who, who haven't had to wrestle with the difference between a rate and a levy, the levy is the amount of dollars, as I said earlier, that you think we need and people like me say, I think you should think we need this. And if you divide that number by what's considered the EAV of our, of, in this case, the city of DeKalb, you get the rate. And the rate times the valuation of the individual properties becomes the dollar amount that people pay. It's a, it's a simple formula, but it has a lot of meaning to all of us. So where are we today? Well, the, the wealth of the city of DeKalb continues to grow, wealth in terms of property, property value, real estate. And I can tell you it's been growing at a significant clip because of new development south of I-88. Meta in particular. Meta's in Afton Township. That portion of Afton Township which has Meta is the fastest increasing EAV per square foot of any place in the state of Illinois. The combination of what's happening south of I-88 and what's happening throughout the rest of the town leads us to guess at this point that the overall value of these two townships is, that are in the city of DeKalb is a billion, 317,537,149. So that is more than two times what it was five years ago. So congratulations. It can help not only local taxpayers over time, but it also helps to, to provide diversity to our tax base, which prior to what's been happening the last five years was by far predominantly residential, which kicks a fair amount of value, but nothing kicks it faster or higher than some of these larger investments that have been happening. And that should normally help in, in lowering the rate that falls against our, our properties, except that we have had an inflation in the, in the costs of buildings, property that's been sold, real estate property. And that's something that adds up to what's called a multiplier or equalization factor and that's gone up considerably just in the last couple of years. It's not because of Meta, interestingly, or the other big, big buildings and properties that are being developed south of I-88, because that land was sold a long time ago, right? But it's a lot of houses, we've had, we've had a revived housing market and all that is, is averaged together and it, and there's been a increase according to our township assessor of 14.69% just in the last 12 month period. So that falls against everybody's property. You can do nothing to increase the, the, the impact on individual properties, but those properties will go up almost 15%. And because of that, people are going to pay higher, higher taxes unless you and the other, the leaders of the other taxing bodies find a way to lower our levy, what we want to take to provide our services. So what's before you tonight, and I'm happy to say to people in the audience, is a proposal, a levy proposal, which has been vetted through the Finance Advisory Committee, the city's Finance Advisory Committee, which proposes to, although we can increase our levy, we will, it will result in a new rate that is some 21% lower than last year's rate. Will go from 81 cents per hundred EAV to 63.3 roughly cents per hundred. And that means savings on the part of people in the audience here of low over a hundred dollars on average. It's hard to say, I mean, we could average with a $150,000 value for a house or $500,000, so it's a moving target, but however you figure it, people will be paying less actual out-of-pocket dollars to the city of DeKalb, excuse me, city of DeKalb, even if we're way off on the EAV estimate. And that's what's before you tonight. We could talk about this, we've had a lot of conversation about this. In April, we had a retreat and we talked about property tax and there are other demands on our property tax than just our operations. In fact, as you well know, and we've talked about this at length, all of the city's property tax goes into the payment of pensions right now. And, and we provide another 2 million this year in addition to all of that property tax for that. And that's, that's an issue and a crisis that we have to figure out on a fiscal basis. But, so the actual number that's before you in terms of the levy is 8,341,336. There's a lot of data here, you've had a chance to look at it. I welcome your, your thoughts on it and happy to answer any questions, ma'am.
One, point of clarification for me. We went up like 9.5% in the value of our properties last year, so now it's going to be about 15%. So we're talking really 25% rounding up a little bit in the two-year period. But this year with the, with the almost 15% valuation increase in all our properties, that's one of the reasons why our rate has gone down so much is we're trying to offset some of that increase with the levy that we're taking.
General rule of thumb, that's right, is that if, if you're, as in this case, the, the general valuation of all property in the city of DeKalb is going up 15% this year. That's how the assessor values the change in values across the board, residential, commercial, industrial. That means our rate has to go down on the whole at least 15%. Goes up 15 in terms of the EAV, we got to go down 15% to, just to break even for the taxpayer. So we've gone down more than that, we've gone more, 21% roughly. And that means there should be some less dollars taken out of pocket to, to maintain city services.
Council, questions, comments? Alderman Perkins?
So another piece to this puzzle, and it's a complicated puzzle, there are a lot of pieces in it, is that at a point in time, our process is that we tie the tax that comes into the city to our pension liability for police and fire. Now, even though all of our EAV, all of our process, or all of our property values are going up, at the same time, that police and fire liability is ballooning crazy. And in terms of data, what I'd like to talk about is this chart on the back here, not on the back, I don't know what page it's on, it's on page seven. And draw people's attention to the blue line on that chart. I don't know if we can bring it up here on the, the screen, it would be great if we could. But the rate at which pension liability and our decision to tie that to our property tax levy to pension liability means that next year, if we go through with this levy, we're going to be short on our pension commitment by 2.1 million dollars. So we've got a bill for pension liability in layman's terms of 10.4, we're estimating for pension liability next year. Our, the amount of taxes we're going to collect is 8.3 million. That's going, that's going up every year. So if we look... back to 2022, the levy or the liability divided with the levy divided by the pension liability in 2022, we funded eighty four percent of what we paid for pension liability. 2023, we funded eighty one percent.
In property taxes, you're saying?
Yep. So the balance has to be paid for somewhere else, from something else, from our sales tax. In 2024, we levied seven point seven million. Pension liability was nine four, eighty one percent. This year, we're going to levy eight three, and the pension liability is ten point four. We're short two point one million for pension liability. So we have to come up with that somewhere else. And incidentally, that's eighty percent. So twenty percent of the pension liability, we're coming up with out of the general fund. And that's our process. And if you look at this little blue line, that gap gets bigger and bigger and bigger to a point where looking at the this chart in 2034, where we have, say, thirty million in reserves right now, in 2034, they'll be gone. So my point is, I don't think there's any way we can decrease the rate this much. I understand the the desire to to reduce the rate. I understand the impact, the reason we want to do that. But we're we're making that decision to short pension by two point one million dollars and grab it from somewhere in the general fund. Now, that becomes a discretionary conversation within with us with us here. Where are we going to grab it from? Are we going to grab it from roads? You know, and a lot of the costs in the budget are fixed. So while I agree with the thought of taking the rate down, the other activity that's happening is this pension issue. And it's a huge issue. We've talked about leaning on other entities within the state to do something downstate. We've seen no activity in five years. So I guess a couple of things I'm suggesting is, what we're doing right now, our existing process has us, our reserves running out in ten years, the existing process. And if they don't run out, the way they won't run out is if the downstate people do something, meaning our elected officials. I don't count on them to do much of anything, you know? This is our bill. Our bill for the pension is DeKalb's bill for the pension. And if we're saying, within our process, we were short last year, and we're going to decrease taxes and make us shorter this year, that doesn't make sense to me. I understand the the business reason for taking the rate down and believe we do need to take the rate down, believe we need to lean on other taxing authorities to take the rate down, but I can't get behind to taking the rate down this this far.
Yes, Alderman is out.
Can I ask a question then? I I so appreciate all of that, Alderman Perkins. And I know you were you're the liaison, and so you're well versed in in what's going on here. So with all of what you've just said in mind, Alderman Perkins, my understanding, and and I'd like the city manager to correct me if I am misunderstanding this, I was under the impression that that design, where it shows that we're going to, you know, end up with zero, at a zero balance in 2034, I was under the impression that that is calculated based on the idea that every single person needs to tap into their pension at the same time. Is that wrong? Am I misunderstanding that?
I did hear that last part.
I was under the impression that this blue line is calculated and our inability to fund it is calculated, assuming that every single person needs to draw on their pension at the exact same time.
Yeah, basically. I mean, this is a closed amortization system. People in the audience know what an amortization system is. If you've ever had a a mortgage, you know you've got so many years to pay it off. And the the beauty, though, is that as you get closer and you have other needs that come up, you want to build in addition to your garage, somebody's going to college, all those things, you can get a home equity loan and you can or you can refinance your your debt based on changes in your local interest rates and so forth. It's it's called an open amortization system. Other pension systems in the state use that because they assume that when you get to a certain date in time, which is just set by the legislature, according to some actuarial decisions made fifty years ago. And the world has changed. People are living longer. All these other things weren't calculated in that. Two thousand forty, that means that all of the money that is owed as an obligation, as as Alderman Perkins was saying, has to be paid that year, that day. So you wouldn't get a loan from a bank if you thought you never could escape from it. But we're in the state of Illinois, and the state is the banker, and we don't have an out. What we're doing right now is we're we've got an ocean liner, pretty solid. We're on an ocean that we know pretty well. We've got so much fuel we can get from here to the port we're trying to get to. But it doesn't matter when the rogue wave hits us. And that's what this shows. Because if nothing happens, if we don't chart another course, and in this case, we can't, we're not in control. The state is in control. And they don't control the weather yet, but heaven help us if they do. So the rogue hits us, and then what do we do? Doesn't matter how beautiful our ship was, how big it was, how strong it was, how much fuel we had. We're done. So all I'm saying here is that you've got a hundred and five million dollar un- unfulfilled obligation. We're paying a hundred percent of our obligation this year. We've been doing it for five years now, and we're going to continue to pay that. So the only way it's growing is because interest, the juice is running on the debt, right? It would if if you had any other loan, right? If you're not paying anything off, how about a credit card loan? If you do, if you don't pay the principal, the juice will run, and next year you'll have, or next month, you're going to have to pay more, right? So that's the system we have. Now, the state can undo that. There are a lot of partners in this. There are the the pensioners themselves. There are the people who represent the pensioners and represent the active lives of people who are in the professions that we're talking about. It's a state system that, like this figure, it's been going for forty years. So the people who voted it are either long gone or they're doing something else. I don't know that there are any forty year veterans right now in the state of Illinois Legislature. And and those that are in the legislature now have, what what I do appreciate is that the counsel is very sensitive to this. We've been we've been banging the drum on this since I've been here in six years now. And every time we have one of these meetings or we're talking about the budget, the same stuff is just updated, right? Same stuff. I don't disagree that we have a whopping debt, but we don't have the means to pay it off. We've got a nice reserve. At the end of this year, it'll be somewhere around thirty one million dollars. But that's only a third. And by the way, the obligation just went up ten. So I've actually shared some some numbers, talked to the the finance people who helped us with our last two bonds, one of the sharpest groups I've ever worked with. And they're recommending against drawing down our reserve anymore right now until we see if there's going to be any movement. Even if there is movement at the state level, it's not enough. And and what if we spend everything we've got and we get down to just, you know, what's in our pockets, basically? What what will drive our operations for the next year? And we have no rainy day fund. Let's say we do that, though, and we feel better about it. Thirty one million, we still have sixty plus million, seventy plus million to go. And the state says, we got this. We got this. How are we going to feel? We're not alone. City of Chicago is now getting in the fight, which will help us over the over the long haul, because they're the biggest, biggest dog in the hunt, right? There are places in Illinois that have exhausted their reserve, and they're not getting a loan from the state of Illinois. They're they're having to talk to their neighboring communities about essential services. There's there's other things coming up here. They're development related. They're the future. We're going to be talking about that when we talk about the budget. And and certainly, this is not, this is not the only moment we're going to talk about the levy. We're also, I mean, some decision needs to be made tonight to give us some guidance for what we're going to bring forward to you in two weeks. That's important. But then we have a budget, and and we're going to get a couple of reports after the first of the year from consultants we've had, looking at our water systems, some other things. I don't think this is the time to make a commitment to pay down any more of our reserve. We're taking two and a half million out of it in a budget that's going to be before you. If you want to take more out for streets, then that's another way that it comes down. I I think Alderman Perkins is right. This is a very layered and complicated thing. It affects us today, tomorrow, and over the next ten years. So if we want to, if we want to, we can, you can spend, or whoever is sitting up there can spend all of the reserve twice a month. I mean, you can you can discuss this. You get you can get together and all you have to do, according to our financial policy, is say, spend it, Bill, and the next day we write a check. But so so we're not losing time here, but we can't afford to do it, in my opinion. And I can elaborate on that when we go to the budget.
Counsel, additional comments, questions?
Yes, Alderman Larson.
I'm not sure how I want to exactly say this, but I I so appreciate that we're trying to get our taxes down for, let's face it, for me, for all of us. But I also know that everything is up. So to me, if we could even hold it the same, I think people would be like, gosh, I can't believe they held it the same. Every time I go to the gas station or the grocery store, it's higher, higher, higher. And so while that's not a very fun thing to think about, I think maybe people would understand it, though, if we stayed with, we're holding it beyond. And and I understand, it's it's not, I would like them to go down. I would like the pensions to be paid off. I would like to have money that all of our streets are done. I like a lot of things, let me tell you, sitting up here and seeing. But we got to budget, and we got to work around it. And and we're all budget people. We all have to put money into this this community budget. And so I appreciate that we're doing this, but at the same time, I'm thinking, if we could even just, we've gone down for like taxes, even with the increase last year of our property rates, you know, our values of our property, we still were able to hold the line. And I think if we can just keep getting through this until hopefully some relief comes from the state, and if that relief comes, then the next year, we're like, we've got a new plan. We've got a new way to deal with this. Just my thoughts.
I don't know if you want to respond, city manager?
Just one thing.
And then I'll go to Alderman.
Obviously, I'm passionate about this. I feel like I've spent every day of the every day of the month, every day of the year for six years worrying about this. So I do have feelings about this. So sorry if I was a little overbearing, but I will say this. So all I'm proposing is a hundred dollar return on the hundred dollars. The overall wealth of this community went up a hundred, over a hundred and twenty million last year, this past year, in two thousand twenty four. Two thousand twenty three, it went up a hundred and seventy one million dollars. The combination of those two is more than any ten years in our history since the eighteen fifties, when the railroad came through and jacked all the property values up. It's phenomenal, and we can't return a hundred dollars? Really? The year before, six dollars. The year before that, three. And we're taking the lead. So if I'm sitting in the audience, I don't know a darn thing about this, and I hear that, I say, well, that's not much. I can use it.
Alderman Walker.
Well, city manager kind of took the words out of my mouth. I support this a hundred percent, just for the simple fact that even before I ran, and it's like we were always, you know, promising to lower things and put money back in taxpayers' pockets, and we always find reasons not to. And yeah, Alderman Perkins, you're a hundred percent right. Yeah, that does, you know, kind of worry me. However, you know, we can't just keep sitting on, you know, keep sitting up here saying, we want to help, you know, the taxpayers. Then the city manager comes up with a nice brilliant plan to, you know, put money back in our pockets and not take advantage of it. So that's why I'm going to push, you know, I will be voting yes with this, and I appreciate your hard work, sir.
I think, I mean, I hear it from all the taxing bodies. The, oh, sorry, all the taxing bodies on, we need X, Y, Z to fund a lot of great initiatives or address shortfalls that they may have in budgets. But we we were in a position that, and I got to give our city manager a lion's share of the credit and previous counsel, we're in a position that is unprecedented. And I I I know that this is costing us seven hundred and seventy seven thousand or whatever, if we, rather than holding it flat, so taxpayers pay zero more, this hundred dollars equates to a significant amount of money.
For money, get it.
But without what was going, what's been going on on the south side, this obligation was there always. So we are very fortunate to be able to have the levy increase that he's proposing tonight, to have the ability to have that and take the taxpayer into consideration and give them a hundred dollars back in their their pockets as well. I don't, for me, I don't know what the right answer is. I know it feels right to have the taxpayer as a priority in the conversation. And then when I also look at this this cliff that we're looking at, I I don't know how we can predict more than five years out. I mean, it's easy to do when you just have a spreadsheet and you're putting the numbers in there. But a lot can happen in five years, and amazing things can happen. State can make changes. And correct me if I'm wrong, city manager, but Asmi's model for pensions is one that is is working. It's stable pension system out there in the state government.
It's usually around a hundred percent funded. And although this year, the the rate went up a little bit, because it's also lagging, it's it's a trailing kind of average. But I think it was last year or the year before, it went down. There's never been such a thing with the state pension systems. They're they're broken. They need to be fixed without ruining the lives of the people who are receiving the pensions. And we obviously have to take care of that. And by law, that's a requirement. So but so there are systems out there. Other states have systems that work all day long. But we we make, we have like two weeks a year in the state of Illinois where people will actually take risks, making tough public decisions in the state legislature. It's it's a sham. And I'm sorry, I'm going now. So I'm going to tell you, it is.
Preaching to the choir, brother.
Meanwhile, we go another year without a change. And then you come back for two weeks in late May, early June, or, you know, in mid-May to late May. And then all of a sudden, actually, there's some things happening. But usually, they just add to our cost. It's a bigger thing than than we can solve here. And we can, we can try to do better by spending everything that we got, or a good part of what we've got. And then what are we going to have when that wave comes? And what if it happens that it's fifteen years out? Where are we going to be?
Hold on a minute.
Alderman Larson, just so then perhaps what you're saying is apply the seven hundred and seventy five thousand dollars toward the pension obligation versus paying it later? Is that what you had in mind, to keep it at at a net zero, for example?
I don't want to, like I said, I would rather just be able to have the money we need. But I I guess, you know, if if everybody's facing hard times, I know it would be wonderful to give relief. But it's also, but it's like, boy, they even held taxes the same. And and I and I get a hundred dollars is is, it's a lot of money to a lot of people. So like I said, but I hear what I hear Alderman Perkins is saying, too. So I'm just kind of like, if if things don't happen, is there some way that we should, you know, what now, hope for the best and plan for the worst? And so I don't know. That's why I threw it out there, and I and I'd love to give the hundred dollars. But then I'm also like, but maybe we should just be okay with holding it until we do get some relief and then be able to drop it. I don't know.
And and what is the cost of, if you view this as somewhat kicking the can down the road on seven hundred and seventy five thousand, what's the cost of that to our taxpayers, our future taxpayers, versus the hundred dollars impacted today? And I I think that's what we're really looking at here, is we have been very responsible. Kudos to you and your team, city manager. Great work during your tenure to keep us surprised of this. But I guess it it sounds great that it's a hundred dollars back, right? I mean, it it really does. But what is that cost that we add to the future?
Well, just to be clear on this, so let's say that you want to break even. So the seven hundred and seventy five thousand just means you you that that shortfall that we have in the pension payment, instead of all of that coming out of sales tax and use tax, we have a little little bit more that comes out of property tax. It doesn't do anything with our obligation overall. It doesn't do anything with our obligation, overall.
Right, right.
We're, we're, we're paying it for this year, but we're not paying down the past debt, the unfunded liability, and that just grows. And that's, and again, mostly interest, a little bit, we're living longer, so there's a little bit more that's gotta be paid to keep people going.
So you see the value of the hundred dollars today while exceeding what that impact could be down the road?
You know better than I. Your job is, is to not only deal with these details, which, which mostly consumes me, but also to think about what, when people think of DeKalb, what do they think of in the big picture? You know, where's the big heart? Where, where's the effort? Where's at least the, the symbol of an effort? And yes, a hundred doesn't make a big difference, but you could say to everybody, every household in town, "Go to a good restaurant, have a good evening." Maybe that's all it is, but that means something. And it's not pure, it means there's an intention, and that intention goes a long way, I think.
Thank you.
Alderman Smith.
Several mixed feelings on this one. I talked to Alderman Perkins quite at length, I don't know when day it was. I'm concerned if we would lower them, that we're gonna get taken advantage of as being the leader. Someone else is gonna come in and say, "Hey, city's paying, giving back a hundred to our taxpayers, but maybe we'll just keep it whole, the same rate from another taxing body." That's something, actually, someone else brought that to my attention, and I didn't even think about it. So that's a little bit of my concern. And the other thing is, you know, roads, I mean, I, roads, especially in the third ward, are literally, they're junk, be honest with you. And those are our most expensive streets in the city. So I'm leaning towards, that seven hundred and seventy-five thousand will pay for, you know, the alleyways to be drunk, so that the garbage trucks will go down them without sinking in the wintertime. So I'm kinda, I'm torn, but I want residents to understand, by taking that hundred dollars away, there is a, there's a bad side to that in a way down the road. And that's what I think we need to let everybody know, that that hundred dollars, or let's call it the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, could go to a lot of street repair. So while everybody thinks, "Yeah, I personally, I'm getting my hundred dollars in my pocket," I think a lot of people, at least I know, can use it as well, from everybody I've heard, I'm a little concerned, Bill.
Here, here's one other thing that you should know. I know it, and, and we're gonna talk about this at the next meeting, because we talk about our levy, but also the library levy with our levy, which becomes the corporate levy. We, we are merged under state law with, because the library does not have a separate district. We pass through their requests for levy, but we get a chance to do some job owning and talk about it, as this writers, it's not. So here's the news. If we save a hundred dollars, the library's gonna take fifty dollars back. Because what they're asking for in a levy will result in a very slight rate decrease, but that's gonna be a, a fifty-dollar hit to, on the average, to property tax owners who are otherwise looking for, at the hundred. So that's fifty now. So how far, how low do we go?
I know.
You get it?
Yep. Oh, yeah. Got it.
And I think, being a leader, you're right, we could get taken advantage of, but imagine if we held it at zero, then that, that's the leadership we're showing. And then they'll be, well, we can go a few points above, 'cause we're close enough to the city. Hopefully, the, showing the leadership of a rate reduction like this, it, it, it's leverage in conversations, but it's also leverage with public opinion, that if the city of DeKalb was continuously, every year, been able to do this, why can't you, school district, why can't you park board, why can't you? So I think leadership is important on something like this, definitely. Alderman Walker, did you have your hand up?
I disagree with you, a hundred percent with that, with both of you. I just, we can't just keep promising to do things for taxpayers and not do them at all, so. Yeah, I know I'm the moral guy, but that's just who I am, so. And I, hey, you gotta have faith that the state will come through. That's what my wife tells me, have faith.
Yes, Alderman Perkins.
I'll close on one, one, one last point here. I'll go back to it, back to the, some of the numbers again, and not focus on the reserve, but focus on the gap between what we're levying and what we're paying. In two thousand twenty-two, we levied six point nine, and we paid eight point one. So the city came up with one point three out of other budgets. If we do this, we're gonna levy eight point three and come up with, and have to pay ten four. So we're gonna have to come up with two point one million dollars from somewhere else. So we can give, you know, we can left-pocket it, right-pocket it, we can give it, but something else in the budget is gonna have to pay for it, 'cause we have the bill for ten point four million to pay, period. It's our bill. You know, so we're making the decision to decrease taxes, to increase that gap, and come up from, with it from somewhere else. So, and I'm not, I'm just not comfortable with that. So I'll close on that.
Alderman Smith, did you have another comment?
Bill, just hypothetically, if the school district were to oppose the same reduction, how much dollars would that be?
I, I don't know, I don't know.
Seven hundred and fifty, roughly?
Oh, you mean the same reduction?
Yeah. Take our hundred and apply it to the same rate and the same percentage?
Be more than that.
Yeah.
The last piece, too, if we wanted him to come back with zero, we, we don't know what's gonna happen with property tax contestations as well, just like we saw last year. And we don't know, I mean, like Bill said, this is all guesswork to a point. I call it swag, 'cause there's a lot of science behind it. But no matter what, we would have to leave a cushion just to make sure we hit zero, because I'd be crushed if, when the smoke all cleared, people are actually paying more dollars to the city of DeKalb after all this. So I, I, yes, Alderman Verbeck.
Alderman Smith, just to, to get to your point, then, are you maybe looking for some more consensus from our other taxing bodies to see that they are also taking on a pursuit of, of relief to property taxpayers? Or what, what are you looking for more specifically?
I think you pretty much summed it up. I mean, that's a good, we're starting it, and I hope, please, there's enough pressure, as the mayor, to let everybody else know, we're starting the ball rolling, let's make it a bigger snowball down the hill. I mean, I know it's a terrible analogy, but yeah. I mean, if you just do the math quickly here, that's, that's a lot of savings in one year across every taxing body.
Yeah, I would like their thoughts as well.
Yeah, and the, well, the thoughts, I mean, from the conversations that I've had, and we had a taxing summit back in August, I think it was, and listening to a lot of the taxing bodies, we made it very clear that we're the highest property tax rate in the region. Now, we are knocking on the door, and we might not be the highest one now. We might have beat out a municipality that isn't too far from here. But we're still one of the highest property tax rates in the region. And I'm talking St. Charles, Geneva, Kirkland, Waterman, all that, right? And now we've got a taxing body, we're already the highest sales tax rate that wants to pass, to call it a penny tax, 'cause it sounds so innocuous, but it'll bring us to nine point five percent sales tax, which not only is the highest sales tax in the region, it'll be egregious. I mean, I don't know what Chicago pays in sales tax, but we're really getting up there. So that's been some of the support that we've seen from the other taxing bodies, which is why it's so important that we show leadership in this, because if anyone watched the school board meetings this time last year, all the way up into the last minute, they were very contentious. The count, the public came out and expressed to the board, and that caused them to make some adjustments to try and hold the taxpayer harmless. So I, I think it's really important to show leadership in this, because it gives us, but it also gives the public a foot to stand on when they're talking with the other taxing bodies that are out there as well. Yes, City Manager?
I think the rates are, are very important, particularly outside of the community. So if, if you looked at the top five things the companies look at before they make a decision, small, large, doesn't matter, it could be mom, pa, whatever, gonna move to DeKalb, what's the property tax? That's one of the top five. They wanna know what the rate is, 'cause then they can calculate that against whatever they think the value of their, their particular investment's gonna be. But when you're inside the town here, and all you, when you go to the, to the mailbox, you're not looking for the rate. I don't even know, if we did a general poll, one out of a hundred people will say, "I don't know what my rate is, but I know I paid this much in property tax, and I paid more this year, or less, or the same." Here's, here's a challenge. The mayor has brought the challenge to the other taxing bodies. With your, with your support, and we provide the, the data and all that in the last couple of years, and had a number of summits every year focusing on the rate, but, all right, so we were just talking about a hundred dollars, right? The city of DeKalb, historically, and we're down a little bit now, 'cause our rate's been going down faster than the others, I would say, relatively speaking, contributes ten percent to the overall rate, and, and to the overall, basically, the, the tax burden. The other ninety percent is divided relatively certain shares by the other taxing bodies. So if we, if we can save a hundred, the total should be a thousand. Now, that's a real savings. So the challenge could be, going forward, I'm just throwing this out, and it's probably fluffing as we think about it more, but it occurs to me that we can challenge the other taxing bodies. The smallest are, are sanitary district, one percent, okay, great, you know, ten bucks, okay, it's something, and they would do it. Schools, county, park district, all the rest have a higher share, we, we need, we need to see something, and that could be the challenge. Why isn't it a thousand dollars this year, with all these hundreds of millions of dollars sitting on our, on our, on our doorstep, on which we calculate the tax?
So everyone sitting in the audience, we can't, I don't know how clear it's coming off, but our discussion is, even though your home's going up fifteen percent, which normally you would pay more taxes, what we're discussing is, could we find it a way where, to the city of DeKalb, that portion, you'll spend zero more, even though the value of your home went up? That's the worst case of this conversation. The best case is, we drive the rate even further, and we put money back in your pocket next year. That's the conversation that's happening up here. I encourage you to look at all the other taxing bodies out there. You came here tonight, go to a school board meeting, talk for their three minutes, go to a park board meeting. This is where it's gonna become really important. If we wanna see significant savings to all of our wallets, all the taxing bodies have to get on board. But we're on board. Any other further questions? And if not, I'm gonna summarize. I'm hearing, I think, overall, Bill, we're okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, I know there's a couple nays here, but it sounds like the rate he, or the levy Bill is proposing, is the levy he could at least spend some more time working on. We're gonna talk about this next council meeting, when we actually discuss the budget itself, right?
Yeah, but well, well, the budget will be that following week.
Is it? Okay.
At the next meeting in two weeks, we'll have levy ordinances for you. Normally, you take them in two bites, but there, there is a point by the end of November where this all has to be iced. We, we can't be late in getting our levy computation to the county.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm maybe doing really poor math here, 'cause we haven't heard from everyone, but I'm, I'm hearing no. Smith, you're on the fence still?
Yes.
Larson, you're on the fence still?
Same.
Same.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
I'm a hard yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Okay. So we've got at least a majority yeses, I'm a yes, and then some on the fencers, but that should be enough for you to not waste your time over the next two weeks? Yes.
Thank you.
Does everybody have to have their, their rate there, and at the same time? Was there any chance we'll hear anything?
Well, so you, remember what we did last year? We, so you, you all have to hand it in at a certain time, but, but then there are appeals and so forth, and once the calculation is finished at the, at the county level, which is into the new year, you have until roughly the middle, or second, end of the second week in April, when, and the county has to send out the bills, right? So they can't, you can't keep changing, changing. But we did it last year because the, the appeals were so terrific that, and exceeded our expectations, and we wanted to make sure there was a, a zero impact, no, no new dollar amount. So we did that.
And we had a special meeting, if I remember right, at the last minute.
That's right. But this year, I don't anticipate so many appeals, because the appeals mostly came from properties that were vacant. Okay, understood, but they're still vacant, and, you know, so that, I, I don't think they get the same level of consideration. I'm not on that board, but that's been the history.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any others before I move on? All right. We move on to...
Resolutions.
All right, that's all the considerations we have. All right, moving on to agenda item J, resolutions. Number one, resolution, yeah, resolution two zero two four dash zero one, sorry, resolution two zero two four dash one oh five, authorizing a TIF Fund two sixty-two Architectural Improvement Program, AIP, grant for the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of DeKalb at one fifty-eight North Fourth Street in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Powell. I will not participate in this conversation, because I own a property in the TIF district. I'll just facilitate the conversation in the role. All right, can I have a motion to bring, oh, wait, you already did that? City Manager.
Thank you. As, as the brief background states, the, the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of DeKalb provides a very important warming center in DeKalb, and it's, it's just obvious that to have a good warming center, you need to have a good heating system. The heating system has failed. Talked to Dan Kenny, who's the president-elect of the congregation. Are you still the elect, or are you, are you the president? Still the elect? And Dan's in the audience tonight, and can speak to this, but we, we have reached that point in, in our budget year where we have exhausted the AIP program, but we have done this a little bit, where there's been an emergency. What I'm proposing here tonight is to allow them to go ahead. If you like the, the, the project, we can, we can reimburse right after the first of the year, when the new budget is, is in play. And as part, I will tell you, as part of the new budget, we have the same allocation, not more, but also not less, for our AIP program, which has been pretty successful in the downtown. We've done a number of emergency things, roofs, furnaces, o, other things. So I, I thought since the, under the AIP guidelines, there's more than fifty thousand dollars, as you can see in your background, that's gonna have to go to this repair of major rooftop units that'll have to be replaced. And we can go up to twenty-five, fifty-fifty is, is the category that this is in, HVAC. So I've recommended this for your consideration tonight.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none, then? Rule call.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution two zero two four dash one oh five passes. Do, since Bill and I just toured Hope Haven two weeks ago?
Yes.
And spoke with the board afterward. Hope Haven is a warming shelter, and so everyone's clear, 'cause there's rumors out there, Hope Haven never turns anyone away in cold weather, period. End of story, no argument. They break out cots, they do everything possible, so no matter what, in the city of DeKalb, someone can get to Hope Haven when it's cold and get the shelter that they need. All right, moving on to agenda item J two, resolution two zero two four dash one oh six, authorizing the purchase of a vehicle exhaust removal system for DeKalb Fire Station Four by Hastings Air Energy Control Incorporated in the amount of thirty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Verbeck, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item and the next item pertain to the new fire station number four. The, the costs are, as, as you've had a chance to look, are, are essential. One is the vehicle exhaust system, the, the next one is a station alert system, we have to be able to alert our firemen when there's an EMS call or a fire call. And in this case, both of them are over twenty thousand, so it's not within my authority to authorize us to proceed. You did okay a construction package of, of about three point nine million dollars for the station, but we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna borrow to pay for these, these particular items, not really capital items, so it's before you tonight. The, the first one is a vehicle exhaust system, and that's what this one is, for thirty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars. It's a system like the system we have in other stations in the city. We have confidence in, in its value and, and the work, and, and some, something like this is essential, obviously, to keep the fumes from remaining in the apparatus bays as the vehicles are pulled out. So we recommend your approval.
Counsel, questions? Hearing none, rule call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
8I?
Resolution 2024 dash 106 passes. Number three, resolution 2024 dash 107, authorizing the purchase of the Phoenix G2 Station Alert System for DeKalb Fire Station 4 from U.S. Digital Designs in an amount not to exceed $47,796.56. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins, or sorry, Alderman Powell. Uh, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We've come a long way since the loud bell outside the building, blinging at all hours of day and night, whenever there's a call. Uh, the, uh, technology is such that now we have, uh, these ramp-up systems that can provide, uh, uh, smart lighting and, and, uh, display screens, and, uh, and so, the speakers are part of it, but, uh, we have to be sensitive to the fact that we're right up next to a residential neighborhood, so, uh, you'll see a lot more of the smart stuff to wake people up. And then always the lieutenant can go around and kick them in the slats, but, uh, that's not how we prefer to do it. So, uh, we're gonna, uh, recommend, uh, the same system we have, uh, and, and just recently, we talked about this in Station 1, where it was dam, it was a water damage. I can assure you, in this new station, there's no basement below our apparatus floor, so recommended approval.
Counsel, comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
8I?
Resolution 2024 dash 107 passes. Agenda item K, ordinances, second reading, we have none. Agenda item L, ordinances, first reading. Number one, ordinance 2024 dash 050, authorizing an annexation and development agreement with Moore Acquisitions LLC for property located northeast corner of Peace Road and Fairview Drive, Project Midwest. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Sisata. City Manager?
Three ordinances here. Uh, the first one is an annexation and development agreement. This is first because it lays out basically the, the expectations, the reciprocal responsibilities for the developer, and also for the city, and, and coming to terms with, uh, how this particular, uh, parcel should be developed. It's 147 acres, uh, it's at the northeast corner of Peace Road and Fairview Drive. Uh, you see a picture of that on, on the screens. Uh, the, uh, couple of things that are part of this particular ordinance, uh, what's, what's proposed for this site is something that will fit into the zoning of, uh, logistics, manufacturing, packaging, and so forth. That's gonna be a planned development industrial type of zoning. Uh, it's proposed that the, uh, the main building, or the initial construction will be, uh, a little over 1.3 million square feet. That's comparable to the Ferrara size, uh, distribution center, uh, with the possibility of, of extending, uh, up to 1.5 million with possibly, uh, a, a future building expansion to the north. Uh, the site's in unincorporated DeKalb County, so we'll have to deal with that when we deal with the annexation, which is to come. Uh, there will be, uh, parking spaces for both, uh, the, the employees, trailer parking spaces, and about 150 truck docks. Uh, detention is provided on the west and the southeast portions. Uh, there is a sewer currently along the north side of Fairview Drive, uh, and there's also, uh, water connection which is available. It's on the west side of Peace, but it's adjacent to the subject property, so utilities are available. Uh, roadway improvements will be required along Fairview Drive and Peace Road, and these will all be at the expense of the developer. Uh, the necessary improvements will be based upon a traffic study, uh, so there'll be, uh, where necessary turn lanes to provide, uh, to, to work against any congestion that might happen with, uh, north-south traffic on Peace in particular. Uh, there are, uh, reasonable setbacks that, that conform to the, the campus-style look that you see on Gerla Road between 4th Street and Peace Road. Same things have been brought up to the corridor on Peace, uh, did I say Peace? I meant Gerla Road, okay. Um, and, uh, we've also gone into some detail on, on the development standards that would apply in this case, uh, with, with a planned development. Uh, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this, uh, might not have, except there's, there is a zoning piece to the agreement, and there's also a concept plan, and so that falls within the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And they reviewed this last week, and, and by unanimous vote, they recommended your approval. We recommend that you support their recommendation.
Counsel, questions or comments? So, when they get assigned a name, Project Midwest, that's usually a good indicator that moving forward, yeah?
We've had, uh, projects Hammer, and Velvet, and Ventus-
Yeah.
Lots of names.
Yeah. Uh, hearing no comments or questions, uh, I guess roll call.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
8I?
Ordinance 2024 dash 050 has been, uh, passed on first reading. Um, I would definitely take a motion to waive second reading on this.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Sisata. Any comments or questions on that? Head shaking. Roll call please.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
8I?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024 dash 050. Moving on to number two, ordinance 2024 dash 051, approving the annexation of certain property located at northwest corner of Peace Road and Fairview Drive to the city of DeKalb, Project Midwest More Acquisitions LLC. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Sisata, seconded by Alderman Powell. Uh, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The actual act of annexation is exclusively yours, uh, doesn't go before the Plan Commission. Uh, and, uh, you, since you've approved on two readings the basic, um, responsibilities of, of all the parties, um, I don't believe there's a reasonable way to decline to approve this act of annexation, so I recommend your approval.
Counsel, comments, questions? Roll call please.
Sisata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
8I?
Ordinance 2024 dash 051 approving the an, oh, sorry, uh, ordinance 2024 dash 051 passes on first reading, I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman, uh, Walker. Uh, City Manager? Oh, roll call.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Larson?
Wait.
Yes.
Wait, we had a motion, hang on, real quick, we had a motion. Any comments or questions on that? Sorry, getting out of order. Hearing none, roll call please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
You sure? Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
8I?
Ordinance 2024 dash 051, I, was that second reading or first reading?
Second.
Second, thank you. I literally have jobs on my mind, and tax revenue on my mind with a project like this. Uh, I'm just, I'm excited about it, so sorry. So, second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024 dash 051. Moving on to number three, ordinance 2024 dash 052, approving the zoning petition of Moore Acquisitions LLC to rezone certain property located at the northeast corner of Peace Road and Fairview Drive to the PDI Planned Development Industrial District, and approving a concept plan for the development of an approximately 1.3, well, 1,322,800 square-foot building to accommodate logistics, manufacturing, packaging, distribution, and warehouse uses, Project Midwest. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Powell. Uh, City Manager?
The title was as long as my background on this.
I bet.
So, uh, you've, you've already said in the first ordinance that, that you approve of the zoning, and here is the ordinance that allows you to confirm that.
Counsel, any comments or questions? I would imagine not. Uh, roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
8I?
Ordinance 2024 dash 052 passes on second re, first reading, I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Yes.